Hello, everyone. I'd like to welcome the Albany City Council work session, January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two at four P M. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And roll call, please.
Yes, your honor. Mayor Alex Johnson, the second.
Here.
Councillors Olson.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Bartholomew.
Here.
Kupcinski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
And Smith.
Present.
All members present, your honor.
Well, thank you very much, Gabe. So, business from the public. Persons wanting to comment or provide written materials for the record must register to speak and attach the documents to the email address provided in the agenda before noon today of the meeting. At present, we have one person that signed up to speak tonight, a Mr. Russell Hawk on the property near Edgewater Village. Mr. Hawk, are you with us this evening?
I don't see him on Zoom at this time.
Counsel, would you be okay with Mr. Hawk's show up a little late?
Yes.
Counsel, I want to hear control of thumbs, please.
Yes.
Good. Thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead and move on. Well, that's the next property is the Edgewater property. Shoot. So, two oh five Madison Street Northeast City Surplus Property, RFP, and Catlin, pages one through five for discussion, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor and councillors. Well, we are here today to just start some dialogue about the city-owned property. There is no need to rush to declare the property surplus at this time, and there's also no need to determine the future of the property at this time or take any immediate action. Why are we here today then, right? Well, it's an opportunity to be a little proactive, understanding there is interest from developers in this property for housing. Although a future of the property has not been determined, we wanted to ask you about the property for needed housing, or if you have a vision or desired outcome for the property. And with council having provided direction and focus on the topic of housing affordability, this land could represent an opportunity for just that. So why housing? Why do we put that in our memo? Well, the city does need more housing, especially affordable housing. The Housing Affordability Task Force will be looking at different ways that things the city can do to address housing affordability, and certainly surplus property is one of those options local governments have, and there is need for a variety of housing. It's it's not just housing for those that are earned below the median income, but for seniors, young adults, we need one-bedroom units, for example. The Albany Square Plan that, you know, had this whole area downtown before the Central Albany Revitalization Area Plan was adopted listed this area as high-density housing. So with a multitude of development scenarios allowed for the zone, I think I mentioned in the memo that this property is owned waterfront. It is a mixed-use zone. It does allow housing at a minimum of ten units per acre. We do have really a limited supply of housing available for medium density of ten units an acre or more. We wanted to get your thoughts on this property for needed housing and start that conversation. So so we're here today to find out what your goals and outcomes are for the property, if you have any, and if you do, are you interested in declaring the property surplus? And if you are interested in declaring the property surplus now or in the future, let us know if you, after today's conversation, want to go ahead and declare the surplus property now. There is a memo in your council packet for Wednesday evening. It's on the agenda, but but we can pull that item from the council agenda, so there there is no need to take action today. But apparently, this item has generated a lot of discussion or interest from the public, and we anticipate you will be receiving some proposals possibly or interest in the property. So we wanted to get ahead of that, and and that's about about it. I'm happy to try to answer.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Hawk has joined us.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Hawk, are you ready to speak with us?
So. Yes, hello. Hi.
We've read your your we read your email, and I was wondering if you could kind of highlight some of the things you'd like to talk about. You have three minutes, and if we need more time for you, then we'll we're gonna I can a lot more time. Okay?
Oh, hello, mayor, and greetings, members of the city council. My name's Russell Hawk. I live down at Edgewater Village. So I'm one of four owners of the people that I'm one of four owners in Edgewater Village where we actually live in the house. The the rest of the community is is rentals. So when I bought the house, that wasn't it 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 was sold to me as a community that was going to be impartial owners and partial renters, and it's mostly renters now, and it's become a transitional community. Another thing that was mentioned to me when I sold, when I bought the property, was that that area that you're referring to was going to be a parking lot for the businesses and and some green space for the neighborhood. I was also told that it might be some apartments through I was how I understood it is that some of it was already owned by Edgewater as well. So it came to my surprise when I learned that this was being considered to be marked for low-income housing, especially when what I was understanding that we were trying to revitalize the downtown environment to attract business professionals and being a member of this community, and it's been difficult to with what's going on downtown with the homeless situation, and I'm not referring to the homeless that, you know, they're trying to make a better life for themselves. These are people that are on the trail I see daily that are either mentally ill or using drugs, and it's just been a challenge for myself to because I I I think you all know that I pick up the area, the downtown area, the trash and the camps and things that come around. So yeah, and another thing, and I'm concerned that my house, the the value of the house will be extremely devaluated with bringing in this type of housing, and then also just the bringing attracting more of that community down to the riverfront is are my concerns.
Good.
And doing that all in a timer is really kind of stressful.
So I'm gonna open my councillors. If you guys would like to respond or business from the council. We are tracking pretty well as far as time. So I I my first impression is that I you said low-income housing, and I did not understand, didn't pick that up anywhere. So counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Hawk? We don't want him to speak with us a little longer.
I, first of all, I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry. Do I need to be recognized?
Go ahead, Counselor Novak.
Yeah, thank you. I've left myself unmuted so that I don't have issues unmuting myself. First of all, Mr. Hawk, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you have done down there that, I mean, I read your letter, and I I really appreciate you and others like you who've taken the time and the effort to clean up in those places along the river and, you know, anywhere in town, but especially there. I've walked there, and I I have witnessed an awful lot of mess. So thank you. I I greatly appreciate your efforts, and I I understand your concerns, and I I share them. I honestly would be distraught if we were to have a situation in Albany such as what I see along the riverfront in Corvallis and Portland. That is the last thing I want, and in Salem. So I I don't want that to happen in Albany along our waterfront or anywhere in Albany. I'm all for housing, and I too, I I liked how you put it in your letter. I I have compassion for people who are trying to get their lives back on track, but I have in all honesty, no compassion for those who take advantage, for those who victimize others, for those who leave these messes behind and don't give a crap, if you don't mind my saying so, or who literally do. I've mentioned to the council before, we've had someone defecate on the entryway, the back entryway to my business. So I am, I am, I should share your I I think I'm on the same page with you, sir, and I I will do everything I can to not let things go the way that you are concerned that they may well go. And I also am concerned with what you said in your letter, and here maybe I need, because these things took place before I got on the council. But this, you said there was a Kara had struck an agreement where George Diamond would get a kickback on his loan for every house sold.
Let's let go down that path. Let's have the city manager address that when that comes up. Okay?
All right. Okay, then I'll stop there and let someone else speak.
And I'm sure the city manager will address that comment. Okay. Any other councillor have something to bring to Mr. Hawk, discussing Mr. Hawk? Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I was just wondering is is the parking adequate inside your complex there now?
No, it's it's terrible.
Okay.
So am I supposed to answer these questions? I don't know how that.
Yes, you're you're having a discussion with us.
Okay. So the HOA, you're not supposed, we're not supposed to park on the road, but everybody parks on the road because the housing, I guess, area that's just east of that property, there's hardly any driveways for those houses. They have garages in the back, but they have very little driveway, some of them. And so everybody parks out on the front out on the on the street, even though we're really not supposed to do that. I'm lucky enough, I have a house that's on the house or on the river. A house that's on the river, and it does have a full driveway, so I can park there. But I'm getting people parking outside of my house that either they got too many cars in the driveway, or there's a house, there there are houses across the street that don't have that type of parking, so they're parking in front of my house. Another thing that's going on is that we have businesses on Water Street, Calipoya Brewing, that when they have, you know, they're getting quite popular, and they're parking on water, which doesn't, there's not that much parking there, and the street narrows there, because Hill is a one-way street in between Water and First Street, and that railroad, it's, you know, you pretty much have to pull to the side for a car to come through at the intersection. Anyway, people are parking within our neighborhood to go to that establishment.
Yeah.
And so it people are actually putting out their garbage cans, even though it's against HOA, and leave them out there all week long so that people don't park in front of their house, because there's been problems with people either getting sick in their yard or passing out in their yard, or you know, there's vandalism that goes along with drinking, I guess, and they just don't want them out in front of their house, so they put their garbage cans so that no one can park in front of there. So to answer your question, parking is is limited.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other councillor have a comment or question for Mr. Hawk? Okay, sir, I'm gonna have the city, oh, go ahead, Counselor Olson.
It's not a question for Mr. Hawk, it's a comment. We're spending millions of dollars for planners from Portland to plan the whole waterfront. And apparently haven't paid a minute's attention to this piece of vacant property. So I I'm not gonna ask, and we asked them to do some planning on it, because I'm sure it would probably cost a hundred thousand dollars of earth if they if they had to be involved. But I am, I will say I'm really disappointed that they haven't provided us any any leadership, any any whatever with regard to this piece of property.
All right, thank you, counsel.
So I'll have to apologize to to Mr. Hawk for our oh, kind of slapdash development in this area. And I I've been on the council the whole time, and I've tried my best, but it was essentially zero effect.
So I'm gonna go to Counselor Smith. Thank you, Counselor Olson. With Counselor Smith and then the city manager.
I have my hand up.
But Counselor Smith was first.
Okay, yeah.
City manager and the Counselor Smith, Counselor Smith and the city manager.
Just two, well, two things. After thanking Russell for continuing the work that he was working, doing for a couple of years before I was still employed downtown. That's a tough job, and and to stick with it all this time means that you really care about your neighborhood, and I'm I'm pleased with that. We all received a letter earlier today or email to earlier today from former Mayor Canopa, and she referred to this property as being prime real estate, quote unquote, in in the past or in at currently. I don't believe I've ever heard it described that way, but is there is there anything in the riverfront plan or anything in the comprehensive plan that would call this prime real estate? It hasn't moved for years and was home to a big pile of bricks for a long time after inland quick freeze burned down. I I would think something that was prime real estate would have been snapped up, but I don't know what goes on behind the scenes, so enlighten me if you if you might.
So thank you, Counselor Smith, Counselor Novak, then I'm gonna go to Seth. Counselor, excuse me, Seth, do you have something for us?
Well, I just thought if it's helpful to note, I I don't know the way the property's been described at length in the past. I've been here for four years now, and when the planning for the waterfront project started, there wasn't consensus at the time of the disposition for that piece of property. So it was specifically asked to be left out of planning until the council decided what they wanted to do with it, rather than plan for something where there wasn't consensus. So I just add that bit of context.
Thank you, Seth. Counselor Novak.
In former Mayor Canopa's letter to us, she mentioned that there was a lot of talk of making that area a parking place in order to also help the businesses in the area that, is it Calipoya Brewing? The is that the name of the the restaurant? I've been there a couple of times to that. I I just know that as as someone who has a family business that is a restaurant, parking is vital, and I I really have to stand with former Mayor Canopa on a lot of the things that she said in that in that letter. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Counselor Olson, and I'm gonna go to the next item on the agenda, Bill five, five, six, one.
Oh, yes, I was on the council during all the time that ex-mayor Canopa was talking about, and I have to agree a hundred percent with her comments. Yeah, that was considered a a a real vital part of the waterfront plan, whatever it was going to be, but now that's, as I said before, gone by the boards. And yeah, I want to thank Mr. Hawk, too, for his efforts to clean up the path, and I believe also down along the water. And did you say that you'd been given a guff by the city for having a boat down there?
No. So when I was first sold the property, I was told by the developer that the property just uh just beyond the Dave Clark Trail down to the state line was going to be mine to do with what I wanted. And I thought that was great, and then I got closer to the sale, and then they said it was going to be owned by the HOA. But, you know, I could still use it, and that would save me from, you know, any sort of insurance issues that might, like there is an accident on the property. So I thought, okay, well, that's great. Well, then later on, when I was living there, I was using the property to get down to my boat so that I could go, which wasn't my initial plan to pick up trash, but that's what I used it for in my boat, and then I got a no trespassing order.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hawk. Counselor Bartholomew, Counselor Kupcinski, and I'm going to the city manager after that.
Thank you, mayor. I I did have people could contact me and express concerns about that area due to the parking and flow of traffic, because the it the way that the one-way street goes, it makes it hard if you're traveling east to see oncoming traffic. If there's, because there's parking in front of Calipoya right there, and to see the oncom- oncoming cars. And so the flow of traffic is also an issue that I heard about, and to address the and I I'm speaking from, so full disclosure, I speak as a as a an employee of Habitat for Humanity, I speak about also, I can I can attest that those properties that.
Excuse me, Counselor. Somebody's banging in the background.
Oh, sorry. It's my fire.
Okay.
My fireplace, it's cracking, crackling really nicely. Um, so, excuse me. I, as a, we build homes to a higher standard. They they may be plain, but they are owned by the 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 property owners. So that's one thing that would be a plus if something was like that would would take place, is that they were, they're actually owned and cared for, and property taxes are paid by the people that live there. So just to throw that into the mix as information.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novak, and then after that, the city manager. Excuse me, Counselor Kupcinski.
Okay, thank you. A question for Mr. Hawk, and then a question for staff. Based on your description of your HOA, it sounds to me like it's relatively ineffective. I thought those garages were designed as part of the design to make traffic flow and keep people back there by design, and I thought it was a wonderful design at the time. They're just filling them up with, I don't know what they're filling them up with, just normal stuff, but it sounds like that's not working too well, nor is the enforcement of the HOA in general. But back to city staff and what Anne Caitlin started off with on possible ideas for the property. Staff, correct me if I'm wrong, the la- the last review that the city had for housing development needs indicated that the there was a real upside-down amount of single-bedroom homes. And I could see that being a good mix of usage in that property, and it's one of those, if they build it, they will come. And we're not going to get our arms around, quote unquote, affordability anytime soon. I don't believe that's realistic, considering what the economy is doing right now. Be that as it may, there are going to be people that are going to be downsizing and looking for homes that are much, much smaller, so that would be my suggestion right at this point.
And thank you. City manager, can you comment on the Kara statement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me add my own thanks to Mr. Hawk for the cleanup that he does, and I I know he does that under some very difficult circumstances, and has actually gotten himself injured a few times doing that. There's, let me reiterate something that Anne Catlin said, and that is that there's nothing urgent about a decision for you tonight. If you want to send the staff back for some more homework, some development of some options, that's that's all well and good, and we'll we'll be happy to do that. And then lastly, I think the reason you called on me, mayor, was to address the use of the term kickbacks. That's a, that's a term that's inaccurate in this case. You know, I think that that probably refers to is loan forgiveness on loans that were acquired to do brownfields remediation on that property in order to, in order to be able to actually develop it. But I would ask Seth Sherry to chime in here. He probably can elaborate on that a little bit better than I can.
I'll just be brief, Peter. Thank you. And counsel, if you want to have more details about this, I can come back again, but some of you who were on the council a number of years ago, Counselor Olson, maybe you could remember the details better than I, but essentially, between brownfield remediation and some incentive to build residential market rate housing there, there were loans and forgivable loans given, and the kickback, maybe that term is meant to describe, which is inaccurate, as Peter pointed out, but they receive forgiveness on an annual schedule. It starts with when a home was finished, a certificate of occupancy was administered or or received, then they would be qualifying for forgiveness, and then forgiveness is metered out over a period of time each year. So that that's all that's happening there.
Thank you for that, Seth. Matthew Rutgers are committee development director, and then we're gonna go to the next agenda item.
Thank you, mayor. And and yeah, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what what Peter had mentioned and, you know, tag on to what Anne said, you know, what we're we're here tonight really is just for information for the council, and if there's, there is no immediate need to do anything. The one thing that Anne did mention, if, you know, in any of this process, if if the city, you know, if council direct staff to to move towards some type of development, one of the first steps, as we saw with Parks and Recs properties, that that the city ended up selling here in in the past, you know, is to declare it surplus. So staff has put that on the agenda for Wednesday, only if the council wants to do that. If if the council desires to kind of just, you know, hold for the moment and have staff come back with with some ideas and potentially like what an RFP process could look like. We're we're absolutely willing to do that. So just here here to answer any questions or whatever you need.
Thank you. Counsel, would you like them to come back at another time? Pull it off the agenda for Wednesday night. Can I get a thumbs up? Thank you very much, Matt Matthews, Seth, Seth, and Peter, and Anne. Next up on the agenda is Senate Bill five, five, six, one, allocation strategy, and Catlin, page six of your document.
Mayor, I I don't have a lot to say outside of the memo, other than this is sort of a status update. You have probably heard that Senate Bill five, five, six, one is allocating a million dollars to fourteen different cities in Oregon. All of these cities, including Albany, are what the federal government calls entitlement cities, because we run community development block grant programs. I did, I did, will say that since the memo was drafted and mailed, we found out last week that the funds do not need to be spent by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, which is is really good news. The state has to spend the money, which means they're going to allocate those dollars to us. We don't know when we're going to get the those funds. So we have a little breathing room. I was starting to get a little worried, which is why we are here trying to time our agenda items on the same meeting to to give you a status update, but this will give you and staff time to really explore what the greatest needs are out there. A reminder that these funds are required to be used to address affordable housing needs, housing insecurity, and homelessness, and that means a lot of different things. So what we're trying to do now, we're in the process of evaluating requests for proposals or applications for our community development block grant program, which really opens up already a a bunch of different needs out there, right? And then we will be reaching out to other area partners, housing providers, the shelters, to find out what else is needed out there, and what projects, if any, are percolating that might benefit from these funds, but there isn't going to be a a big rush to spend the money, but we do want to kind of do a little research to see what's going on out there, and then bring our findings back to you and get your. kind of do a little research to see what's going on out there and then bring our findings back to you and get your direction on how you want to proceed. Once we we have some information, if do you want to do a competitive process or another process to allocate the funds? But of course, we we don't want to wait too long. I mean, the sooner we can get the money circulating in the community, the sooner we might actually be making a dent on, you know, addressing some of our affordable housing and homelessness needs. So that that's all I'll say, and we would love more input on this topic while we're here. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Anne. Counselor Johnson?
Yes. Anne, I was wondering, you say, you know, you're going to go to these different agencies and see what's missing. Do you have any idea what might be proposed? I mean, there's you know, if you you spend it in different ways, CBDG grants, whatever. It seems like it could be just chopped up with a lot of pieces of the pie. And I just wondered, do you have any idea, has anything come to you that would be like a good idea? I think we're I think I'm asking for just like an idea, some help here, like is it for like this property we just got through talking about, you know, to put a bunch of tiny houses on there, or is there someplace else? Do you have any idea?
Well, I I don't have a specific idea for you. I think we want to get some input from the agencies and and other people that build housing to so we can figure out how what are ways that we can support affordable housing or address our homelessness issue. I mean, we do know of several projects that are in works or trying to get underway. You may know that the Albany Helping Hands Shelter has received some funding to add on a thirty-bed facility that would be a no barrier, a low barrier, no barrier shelter. So that means they would be able to serve people that may have some addiction issues, for example, and and are wanting to take a drug test to stay in their facilities. We do know that Creating Housing Coalition is looking for land for for housing. So, you know, could these funds help with that? We do know that we have local builders that could build housing that is affordable. Now, I mean, we probably want to look at, you know, some sort of deed restrictions. So we have an affordability time period, but maybe these funds can be used to help support some of our smaller projects and make them, you know, long-term affordable or or some timeframe of affordable. It could also be providing services to address these needs. So you know, I I don't have a long proposal because we're still trying to actually assess what's going on. I mean, I know there's interest in doing more homeownership affordable housing from another agency in our area, Dev North West. I think they've been looking for property to do something like that where you might have homeownership Habitat is probably looking for land for, you know, new builds, that kind of thing. So I think it'll be a combination of what's percolating, what ideas did the agencies out there see? Let's just double check what we think the needs are out there, but is there anything that could benefit now or within a year? Do we know of something that's percolating where this money might be able to leverage funding from the state, you know, bringing in, you know, millions of dollars and showing a local match, that kind of thing. So we wanted to sort of start doing that research. And we've started a little bit with our CDBG program, but we're going to need to to, you know, reach out and do some more. And all ideas and input are welcome here. I mean, you will make the final decisions, but we're trying to provide that. Do some of that homework for you and bring you some of that background information.
And appreciate that. You know, it was been a while ago, excuse me, that some I was approached by someone who said that Helping Hands was kind of interested in that whole block of old houses. And I just wondered, since they they got their own grant or whatever, they're going to have thirty beds. I just wondered, is something like that could be in the works for something like this? Because that way it would be closer services and yet by itself, you know, it it it's not like in the middle of a neighborhood, that type of thing. And so I don't know. That's an idea anyway.
Yeah, it certainly is. I mean, I think one of the big issues with homelessness is there there's a spectrum of housing, right? So you've got people that need services or different populations that have different needs and helping them get into transitional and then permanent housing and and providing the services. And I know that Helping Hands is trying to do that. So, yeah, I mean, we're again, we know we're getting money. We don't have the money. We wanted to just let you know that we're working on it, but this will be your decision and wanted to share with you where we were. We
Thank you.
So Council Bartholomew and then Counselor Novak.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. When Bessie brought up that thing, I was like, oh, this would be a good time for me to share an idea that I had brought up in strategic planning and also have talked about with Peter and other city staff, and that would be the city human services coordinator as an idea. And I do have a member of the community outreach assistance team or COAT coming on Wednesday to talk to this to the council.
That it? But thank you, Counselor Novak.
Thank you. I, Counselor Johnson, when she mentioned that area, it reminded me that I had had a conversation with Emily, who runs Helping Hands and specific to those surrounding buildings and that area. And Director Catlin, I think it would be really great if we could look into the purchase, using some of these funds for the purchase of those surrounding buildings, because as Counselor Johnson pointed out, it's close to services. You already have an established, you know, Helping Hands is there doing amazing work. And I would I would be all for seeing that entire area devoted to housing folks, getting folks different different air, different levels of housing needs, having that met and purchasing those buildings and putting that putting putting that area to to, I, you know, good use. There 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 are some really dilapidated buildings there. And maybe it would be less expensive to to do something there. And then Counselor Bartholomew, I don't know if it was you. I I know when we had that planning thing the other day, I I got so excited because you you mentioned when you were reviewing your group's brainstorming about three D print housing. And I've heard of three D everything, print everything. And I I I would love to pursue that. I don't know Director Catlin, who we would talk to, but it seems to me like that might be a more affordable. I don't know how far off it is, but I don't think it's very far off at all. And if we could do three D print housing for some of these things, rather than traditional forms of development where the lumber is skyrocketing and you can't even get certain types of whatever nails you need to put something together. I I just know that right now, the supply chain is kind of a mess. But if if there's a solution, if three D print housing is a remotely close to being a reality, and we have, we have we have buildings, we have locations out there in that area that are empty and not being put to any use. I I'm super excited about creating some low income and and maybe different levels of housing there, because you already have folks who have, you know, low barrier and I don't know, it just makes sense to me, that whole area, because it's so central to so many different things. It's near main roads, freeways. It's to me, it seems ideal. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. I think Anne had a comment, and I'm going to move on to the next one if you don't.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I appreciate all of your comments. I've been taking notes. I'll make sure to attend the works, the meeting on Wednesday to hear the update on the the COAT project. But I did want you to know that the city owns several of the properties next to Albany Helping Hand Shelter. And the Helping Hand Shelter already owns a lot of those other houses and and the ones that they own are being used as transitional housing. And we've long talked with the shelter former city managers about, you know, something that might happen there that could provide both services and housing. And one of the other issues that we have with that property is just the zoning. But, you know, we don't get money to build housing. This would be the first money we've had to actually put towards housing development. The CDBG funds can be used to help acquire or do public utilities, but it can't really be used for housing unless another agency applies. So so all good ideas, and we can certainly look into the specific ones you brought up and and we'll bring back more information around those specific suggestions.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you very much, Anne, and everyone for your input. Next on the agenda is business from the council. And on my screen, Counselor Kupcinski is first.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes, I do. My first question is is our new park police person on duty now? The new position we that was created. Oh, there you are, Kim.
I I can step in. Um, we are still in the recruitment phase. The initial one that was internal didn't bring any candidates. And so we went external. We've had many interviews take place. I think there were close to thirty. And I believe up to eight are being asked to come back, I believe, this week for interviews. So we're working towards it. Just haven't found the right person quite yet.
Yeah. And the reason I'm asking is because I had a couple of people call. Basically, the first the first person was said that there's a lot of illegal activity, et cetera, going on at the skate park. And then there's also ban word of people not wanting to use the talking water gardens because they're they're not safe, don't feel safe going there. And so we've got to do something. You know, I don't I don't know what it is, is, you know. I'm I'm sorry that it's taken so long to get this person, and I know everybody's busy, but if we can't use our own the the few recreational things that we have and feel safe about it, then, you know, is we're just, it's gonna, it's gonna go honestly, go to pot. That's not what I want to say. Go awry. And so I just don't know what's done. I know it's a police issue. But, you know, I don't know, have we ever thought of having any citizen, you know, I I know they have some up in Portland where they they don't have a uniformed armed gun, but they're visible to where the people doing the bad things are, you know, like, oh, wait a minute, there's somebody here. I better not do that, you know? I I I don't know what to do, but I just it just worries me that we're going to everything's just going to get away from us and it's going to be too late. That's all.
Well, you have something, Peter?
No, I was just, I nothing specific. I was just thinking about your and my conversation about a volunteer corps to help with this kind of thing. You know, they're they're not armed. They have no enforcement powers, but there are people who are there and they, you know, can help with cleanup at the same time that they provide a presence, which might deter people from doing things like Counselor Johnson's talking about.
So I actually, I'm glad, remember I saw you Friday at the restaurant? One of the people there actually brought up that particular thing. So I'll bring that up in my time. So thank you. Counselor Bartholomew, you're next.
I spoke about the COAT Coalition and it, in a way, it does address a little bit of Counselor Johnson's concerns in that we are that our outreach takes place in those facilities. So but that's all I didn't. Other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Good. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novak?
Thank you. Counselor Lydane, you said you you don't, you have director. I said council, my bad. Director Lydane, you said you don't have any idea how close we are to having that officer, that patrol officer?
Sure. So like I said, I believe the second round of interviews are this week. We would have hoped to have had this person on board already, but just like everybody else, hiring has not been has has been a challenge in in finding applicants. So we are hoping, you know, within the next month or two, we'll have somebody on, especially going into the the spring and summer, as that's when we really see a lot of additional activity. Blossoms, the wrong word, but
Come, I know what you mean. Yes, thank you. And then I would have a question also. Whether or not we could, and this one is not for you. Thank you very much, Director Lydane, but from from perhaps Chief Harndon, who I know is not on here right now, but could we not have regular patrol make the rounds through the skate park? I mean, maybe they already do. And some of these other places, talking water gardens, places, you know, the riverfront until we have this until we have this individual there. Do we have regular officers not making rounds in places where we've where we've had reports of of I don't know what how to say it, shady dealings or people maybe doing things that they ought not?
Mr. Mayor?
We should.
What, Peter?
Yeah, we do have, we do have police officers respond as they're called. However, we're as far as having regular patrols in all parts of the city, we're not staffed to do that. But the police will respond when they get a call for a particular occasion in a particular location, they will, they will be there.
Okay, my, I guess my, what I'm trying to say is rather than rather than having it be a situation where the police are responding to a call, because to my mind, this is sometimes they say prevention is worth a pound of cure, an ounce of prevention. And so my thought is an ounce of prevention. I'm sure I agree with you. I'm certain that it's true that we can't be everywhere with the police force right now, because I'm sure, but they they've also rehired. They said something not long ago, I think during our training day, I I heard them say that they filled some positions. So I would think and hope, or at least request, that maybe we can prioritize putting a patrol in some of these areas where we've had where people have reached out to Counselor Johnson or where we know in the past, because there was someone brandishing knives, you know, in a certain area before, you know, where we've had issues. And the police force knows where we've had issues. Could it, could we not, would we not assign a patrol to some of those areas on a regular basis now that they are restaffing? Rather than waiting for the calls?
I will get with Chief Harndon and find out how how the patrol assets are allocated and using what criteria. I know that they they look at that carefully. We'll we'll get back to you with a report of how that's done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Olson, you're next.
Uh, nothing tonight.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Smith?
I just wanted to report that I took advantage of Peter's message last Friday and logged into the Zoom call with the League of Oregon City's lobby staff at noon today to find out what's coming up with the special, the short session that starts next week. They were talking specifically today about land use and housing issues. That'll be before the the legislature this time. I can report proudly that one of the bills that they will be talking about is some changes in the manufactured housing code. Where manufactured and prefabricated homes can be located under what conditions and so on. We dealt with, it sounds like dealt with everything that this bill is addressing in our recent updates of the Albany Development Code, period. So we're ahead of that game. They are also considering extending the a study guideline on SD reviewing SDCs statewide. That'll be coming back. And then there was some brief discussion of House Bill thirty-one fifteen, which was approved in the twenty-one legislature, providing a deadline in twenty twenty-three to update local ordinances related to camping on public property. And so I don't know if we need to do anything. We prohibit camping on private property, but that's something that that they discussed today. They also mentioned that they have updated information on homelessness statewide on their website. I didn't get a chance to look at that this afternoon, but I will do that. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Tonight, I have just a few things. I've got people reached out to me regarding problems in our community. And one person reached out to me regarding the her water bill. And so I'll be swinging by tomorrow, Peter, to kind of talk about that. And skate park issue, I think, was brought up by one of the other counselors. And then another, like, three neighborhoods have issues. And so I'll bring the details and the addresses to you, Peter, and for for Marcia, and we can have those conversations. Next up on the agenda is the city manager's report.
And Mayor? And Mayor, I don't have anything to keep you from going to executive session, but thanks for the opportunity.
Well, thank you very much. Um, recess to executive session to discuss litigation or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS one nine two six six zero subsection two, subsection H. Uh, the council will now meet, now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing whether it's current and leaked likely litigation to be filed. Representatives of news media and designated staff and other personnel shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants will be moved into a waiting room, or you can leave and rejoin the, the meeting in a few minutes. Your screen will display the message. Please wait. The meeting host will let you in soon. When the council returns to the open session, participants remaining in the waiting room will be readmitted to the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in the executive session. I'll re- now recess the, to the executive session at four fifty.